Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the workshop, the Greenville City Council's order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be moderating the workshop. We're calling the city clerk for a roll call.
Mayor PJ Connolly?
Here.
Mayor President Glover, Councilmember Daniels, Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhoff.
I'm here.
Here, Connolly, we have a call.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any recommended changes?
No, sir.
Any to approve?
Sorry. Motion's been made. Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes have it. Move on to new business.
Great.
Madam Leader?
Mayor, and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come to you this evening. What we wanted to do is provide a follow-up presentation from Crystal Morpheus with Creative Consulting. Crystal has been before the council several times, and today she will provide an overview of the work of the Economic Development Working Group, as well as identifying endorsements made by that group. And with that, I will pass it on, Ms. Morpheus. And I think everyone should have in front of you her presentation, as well as some additional documents that she -- some of the documents from the work.
Good evening, Council. This is the third of four times I'm giving this presentation today. So hopefully I've either got it right, or I forgot what I said the first two times. We gave this presentation at 12:00 today to Utilities Commission, then to the Committee of 100. You're the third presentation. And then if you want to hear it again, join me at 6:00 PM with the Development Commission. So I do want to start by taking you back to September. If you recall, on September the 10th, I was part of a series of presentations that involved the fundraising firm, Convergent Nonprofit Solutions. And they talked about the fundraising assessment findings, and I talked about economic development models and structures. After that September 10th date, the county asked for a workshop on economic development models, and that was September 27th. At that time, I talked about the difference between public economic development organizations, public-private nonprofit organizations, chambers of commerce, and different models. After that September 27th workshop with the county, they appointed a working committee. And that's the work that I'm going to talk to you about today, and the endorsements from that committee, and then the ------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------ Just to refresh why we're even talking about economic development models and programs. First, there's a desire for improvement in the economic development program. When the Development Commission, the county's Development Commission, was first chartered, it was focused, and is focused, on industrial development. It's the Industrial Development Commission. But economic development today is a much broader term. It encompasses community development. It encompasses small business and entrepreneurship. It encompasses, in some cases, retail and commercial development. So it's a much broader mission than the Development Commission. There's also interest from the private sector. I mentioned both financial and leadership interests to be involved, and this heightened level of interest from all the allies that participate in economic development. So there's definitely a why, from those perspectives, that we're visiting this topic again. I want to share a few slides with you from that Convergent Nonprofit Solutions presentation from September 10th, just to refresh your memory, because a lot of this goes back to their findings. They met with over 170 people in the community in roundtable discussions and interviews. And their themes were that economic growth could be stronger, and collaboration would create more success. That was the theme out of that engagement with those community leaders. They developed a five-year draft plan for economic development, and a draft of a public-private partnership. If you recall, this slide from their presentation, almost 80% were supportive of a public-private partnership. The 17% that are unsure may be unsure just because you've never had that model here, so they don't have experience with it. Only 5% said they did not support it. So there was strong support from the private sector for a public-private economic development organization. They also talked about how funding would be spread between public and private sources, and that board governance would be representative of the county, all the municipalities, and a wide range of businesses, just not big business. So we took these themes into our working committee, inclusiveness and funding from the public and private sectors. Their end result was that they believed that between $2.5 and $3 million can be raised in a private-sector fundraising campaign. That's over a five-year period. So you would have added to your economic development budget, your public budget, between $500,000 and $600,000 a year of new money, and that's really important. But more important than the money is that private-sector leadership. Whereas public leaders oftentimes turn over in election cycles, private leaders can provide stability to an economic development organization, and they can also advocate for public policy change that maybe elected leaders wouldn't be able to advocate for. So they can take a strong stand for issues that really matter to business. So the money's important, but their leadership, I think, is actually more important. So when I met with you on September 10th, we talked about how that private-sector leadership could be integrated into the economic development program through a public-private model. And again, I mentioned that on September 27th, the county met, and they appointed a working committee. And you have a full list of committee members in the packet that was sent to you, but just especially for the audience, I want to point out that that committee included about 32 people total, two from the county, two from the city, the Committee of 100. The Development Commission had representation, as well as the private sector, the community college, the university, the healthcare system. And the municipalities were represented by voting member Mayor Brown, but all municipal managers were invited to participate, and most of them, if not all of them, did, as well as staff from the Development Commission, Chamber Utilities Commission, and other organizations. So again, more than 30 people were involved in that working committee. The process that we used, we started meeting, and I'll go through a summary of each one of our meetings. We talked generally about the model first, and then we talked about how you could govern it, and the potential bylaws behind that governance. We talked about how it could be funded and staffed, and eventually got to a committee endorsement. So we started meeting on November the 7th, was our first meeting, and really, we talked big picture. We talked about collaboration and consensus building. We talked about how all the municipalities need to be involved, as well as the county and this organization. And we talked quite a bit about communications and transparency. So out of this meeting, really, the theme was move forward, but let's make sure we move forward with this high level of a collaborative model for economic development. The second meeting was December the 5th. We got into more details about municipal representation, public representation in the executive committee. We got into more details about funding and the staffing model. And they said, "Let's keep going forward, and let's talk a little bit more details at the next meeting, in terms of how the bylaws could look." On December the 19th, that was really a very important meeting for the working committee. We talked about how we could transition from the model that you have today to the model of a public-private partnership, and that was important not to put projects on hold during that transition. And they endorsed the concept, the program of work, the governance structure, and I'll get to their specific endorsements in a minute, and the funding model. So we had a real important meeting on the 19th where everyone endorsed that concept and was ready to move forward. At the January 14 meeting, which was to review the results of the working committee, the county withdrew support for proceeding at that time, but the municipalities wanted to continue moving forward. The city of Greenville asked for this presentation, and the municipalities asked for a presentation as well. We now have that set for March the 6th. We'll be inviting all the other municipalities to this similar presentation, because they saw the -- they saw the -- or they put forward their interest in continuing this collaborative effort, and they didn't want it to stop. So what did they endorse? What did the working committee endorse on December the 19th? The first endorsement was of this collaborative organization that involved the county, all the municipalities, the private sector, and allied organizations. The second endorsement was a program of work. I mentioned the Development Commission has been focused on industrial development. That's really the first three bullets of that, existing business retention, expansion, business recruitment, and product development. But today, economic development is so much more than industrial development. It includes supporting talent retention and development, small business and entrepreneurship, retail and commercial development, I mentioned. That next bullet was something that really struck home with most of the municipalities across Pitt County, which was support of municipal strategies. They need a county-wide effort that can get behind some of their niche interests. Think of the food venture interest in Aiden as an example, and the county to get behind that, and then advocating, and then internal marketing and communications. So this is an expanded economic development program of work. The third endorsement point was that it would be governed by a board of directors that was inclusive. Pitt County at five seats, a recognition that Pitt County would put in the most significant amount of funding into the organization. The city of Greenville at three seats, another significant funder of the organization. Municipalities that invested would be put into a rotation of four seats. If municipalities decided not to invest, their manager would still be a part of that board in an ex officio non-voting role. So again, that inclusiveness was important. Even if you don't invest, you still have a seat at the table. Private-sector seats, and then a lot of ex officio managers, and I'll show you a graphic that outlines this in just a moment. So these seats really evenly distribute public and private, except there would be a few more investor seats for -- or private seats for top investors. That's important, because as a nonprofit economic development organization, if you're more heavily weighted to the public sector, you can be considered quasi-governmental. So by having it weighted a little bit more to the private sector, then you can avoid that quasi-governmental status. The next point that they endorsed was a staffing model that reflected the program of work, and the last point they endorsed was a funding model, again, of public and private funding. So this is a graphic that depicts the board representation. Notice the red circle. When I met with you in September, I talked about a large umbrella economic development organization, and how that could encompass the Chamber of Commerce. It could encompass uptown, downtown development organizations, even tourism. Some of you may have participated in the visit to Spartanburg, South Carolina. They have a large umbrella model with many different facets like that. But our working committee only focused on the economic development piece. Those other pieces could be added at some point in the future. This, again, just graphically represents what I mentioned with Pitt County and the city of Greenville being sustaining members, recognizing that they would be the largest contributors to the organization. Municipal members, if they invest, would be in a rotation for those board seats. Even if they didn't, again, their managers would be ex officio non-voting. And then the investors would come in, and the investor group would have voting seats as well, at different vestment levels. And then a large group of ex officio non-voting seats. That is a recognition that economic development doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes many players, like the school system, like the community college, to make economic development successful. So yes, it would be a large board, but again, one of the driving principles out of the Convergent study was inclusiveness. So that's why it is a large board, but it's a large board for a specific purpose. As we look at the officers, the executive committee of the organization, we recommended that the chair and vice chair be from the private sector. Again, that is to ensure the organization remains non-political, and also to ensure the organization can advocate for policies that are supportive of business, even if they're not palatable to elected officials, for example. But that executive committee would have appointees from the public entities of the county, the city, and municipals to ensure public-private representation on that executive committee, and the managers would serve in that role as well. The staffing model, again, reflects that expanded program of work. You can see business recruitment, business retention, marketing is very important, small business and entrepreneurship. But I'll call your attention to the blocks on the far right. Those are for community development strategies, retail and commercial development. Again, those are services that are very important, especially to the smaller municipalities who have had no one in that role for them, but that's very important to their community development efforts, again, to get behind some of the niche strategies that they think are really important in their community, and would overall lift the community development and placemaking efforts of Pitt County, and make economic development successful. So next steps. After our committee went through its steps and its recommendation, its endorsement, the next step would be approvals and a transition process. So what would this body do? What would Pitt County do to move forward? And we've recommended four things. First is to accept the working committee's endorsement and materials, which you're doing today in this presentation, and Pitt County did last Monday at its presentation, to accept these materials and its endorsement. Second is to approve a transition process. We suggest that that working committee be the transition board, because it is inclusive of all of the organizations that we've talked about that are important to this process. So that committee would become a transition board. And that transition board would do several things. First, they would recommend an interim director. The Director of Economic Development, Wanda Yuhas, retires at the end of April, and we do not want your community to lose any opportunities in that transition. So we recommend that the working committee that becomes the transition board recommend an interim director. They would confirm mission and vision statements. They would update the strategic plan. They would oversee the fundraising campaign. And let me mention, that fundraising assessment, which the city was a partial funder of that assessment, has a shelf life, I mean, of only so long before you would have to redo that. So there's, again, a window of opportunity to capture that fundraising that was identified in the study. Recommend a budget for the next fiscal year, start securing office space. And in that transition process, start working on the memorandums of understanding between local governments and the organization. So for example, this organization would have a service agreement with the city of Greenville. It would say, "These are the economic development services we are providing to the city of Greenville on behalf of your appropriation." They would have a similar agreement with Pitt County and other municipalities that invest. So those memorandums of understanding would be a part of this transition board's work. And then also, we ask that you place a placeholder in your budget for the new organization. So for Pitt County, we ask, for example, that they just reserve the same amount of funding that they have all -- that they do reserve for their Development Commission's operations for the new organization. We would ask you to do something similar.
Can you just --
Yes.
Share with us those numbers currently, the county and the city?
I don't have the exact ones. The county is about $750,000. The city was about $400,000.
$466.
I think it's $466.
Okay.
Is it $700?
Thank you, ma'am.
That's $750,000.
And you bought lunch that time, so it's like --
And the county was $744, if I remember right.
Okay, thank you. The second -- the third point of this was for Pitt County to empower the working committee, i.e. the transition board, to vet and recommend an interim director, again, so you don't lose momentum through the transition process with the retirement of Wanda Yuhas. And then finally, for the city, the county, and the Committee of 100 to move forward on the fundraising campaign. This is an area where, I mentioned to the Committee of 100 earlier, this is an ideal leadership role for the Committee of 100, to take on a leadership role with the fundraising campaign. Again, you can't let too much time pass from that fundraising assessment to starting the campaign, or else those -- the, I guess, the indications they got could change. So you need to take advantage of that while you can. So with that, I'll be glad to answer questions. Questions, take comments from the group.
Do you have questions? You want to have comments?
Yes.
What question for you? Do you support creating a public-private partnership? Yes, 78%. That included people from the county as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They interviewed people from public and private sector.
Councilmember Litchfield?
So if you could expand upon the seats, and the county gets five seats, the city would have three seats, and then the other municipalities, which kind of fall under the county, would also have four seats. So the county would represent nine seats of the board, and the city of Greenville would represent three?
Actually, and the county represents everyone in Pitt County. So you could say that the county is represented in all of the public seats that are on the board. They would specifically have appointments to five. And again, this is a proposed draft. It could change, but this is proposed draft, that the county would have five appointments.
And so just so I understand, you know, currently, the county's spending $750,000 on economic development efforts, and kind of staying in their lane, right, when it comes down to economic development? The city's spending $450,000 and staying in their lane with economic development efforts. A combined group during, instead of 750 and 450, a total of $1.2 million in combined economic development efforts. Additionally, we believe that we can raise another $2 million in private funds?
Probably two and a half to three. So but annually, that'd be $500,000 to $600,000 in your model.
Yeah, okay. So one group's raising $750,000, the other's $450,000, and combined, we'd be looking at like 1.7, 1.8, 82? Okay.
And the municipalities ideally would contribute. It would be a small amount. I think we figured if all of them contributed $1 per capita, it'd be around $24,000, $25,000. But they would have financial stake in this group.
For the record, I want to correct. County was 772, and the city was 446.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
So page one has these nice circles, all interconnected, cities, towns, allies, private sector, Pitt County. If it's just the three without the county, do we still have a viable, in your mind, group to move forward?
So you want to take -- I'm glad to address, at my level, that. So yes, I mean, there are examples in this state of city and community economic development organizations progressing and moving forward in a public-private nonprofit organization. Ideally, you would be unified with the county. The reasons behind that are several. One, the state economic development organization likes to work with one entity in a community, because it shows consensus and cohesiveness in the community. Companies like to work with a single point of contact in a community. You would want to bring your resources together to leverage them. So ideally, you want all partners at the table. But there are examples in the state of city economic development organizations.
We do, I'm sorry, we do have a number of partners, too, that may be interested in continuing to move forward, even without, if we don't get all the folks and all the circles.
So there's been three, there's been three presentations, including ours today. It was the Committee of 100, and what was the other one that had the?
Utilities Commission.
Utilities. How did the, did they, did they take a vote as far as?
Utilities Committee did not take action, but I'll call on the Committee of 100 chair to talk about their action.
We had a motion approved to move forward in the process.
Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous. We had 20-some people in the room.
Okay.
It was unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
It was very positive.
Are you guys all in, with or without county involvement?
We are.
Okay.
We are. And we bring substantial assets to the table. We have the Indian Green Park, as well as Cash in the Bank, and we've been pretty successful with all that. So we bring a lot available, not anywhere in the study, but that's a factor.
Councilmember Litchfield?
I just kind of like to share with the rest of my councilmembers that I was involved in this working group, and had the opportunity to work with a lot of the other municipalities and chat with a lot of the municipalities that were involved, and private business owners, and leaders of the private industry that were involved, and found it very encouraging how optimistic they were about this combined, about these combined efforts. And, you know, small municipalities like Beppo, who historically have not really had a voice when it comes down to economic development efforts, in this situation, they would have a voice, and they'd have an opportunity to have a seat at the table. And additionally, some of the private industries felt like this was a really, really important thing for us to continue to move forward from an economic development standpoint. So I thought it was a great working group. I thought it was made up of a wonderful, diverse group of people throughout the county. And Crystal did a great job of bringing us all together and discussing the advantages of this combined group, and it was, it was really, really well done. And, you know, at our December 9th meeting, as she, excuse me, December 5th meeting, as she alluded to, we voted to move forward with, you know, kind of building this out. And it was a surprise to, I think, just about everybody in the room, except two people at the next meeting, when the county decided to step back from this process. And a lot of those smaller municipalities that I talked to after that meeting still wanted to move forward, with or without the county involved. This is an important process. This is an important step for Pitt County and our region that comes down to economic development, and we need to continue to forge forward.
I think it's also need to note, too, that the original, I guess, diagram or setup that we had was, the city of Greenville also had four seats, I think, right, when you brought this up the first time?
Actually, we had three seats for the city, I believe, and four for the county.
But I think it was, wasn't it? I think we had four seats for ours, and there was some discussion. I think Mayor Brown was one of the people that brought up.
Well, GUC was not, GUC was pulled out, and then we added another county's, or --
We added a county seat and a municipal seat.
And a municipal seat. And then the city continued at three seats. And we discussed that.
Right.
And we did not feel like it was, we felt like if it was going to move forward, we were okay with the structure, and the city only having three seats, because we felt it was more important to move forward as a group.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, I think that's important. I think, you know, also taking part in the organization, the working group that we had, you did a great job with the presentation. I think that everybody sat down, and I think the first meeting, everyone kind of sat through and discussed what they felt was most important with this group and moving forward. And I think maybe one, one time, we didn't have a consensus, maybe the first meeting, I think, or second meeting, there was a little bit of, I guess, not everybody was, it was one or two people. And then every meeting after that, it was a consensus, you know, and I think that you did a great job answering the questions, and I think that everybody understood the direction that we were trying to go in. And, you know, I think, you know, personally, what I'd like to see is that we move forward with this. I'd like for us to move forward. I hope that all the other partners will be interested in moving forward. I think it's important for our county. I think it's important for our region. If we're going to continue to grow and prosper in the east, we've got to do it together. You know, I hope the council will consider moving forward, and, you know, despite, we hope that the county will come along, and all the other partners will come along, but, you know, I think it's important for us in the east to take the lead and move forward, despite who's on board and who's not.
So are we looking for an endorsement of some sort, right, today?
That would be very helpful, to have some endorsement from the council.
I move that we endorse this claim.
I second that. You did.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Litchfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation, your hard work.
We'd like to hear so much. We'd like you to stay and do the Town Creek Culvert project.
I'll pass it now.
She's got another presentation she's got to do.
She's got to do one at six, her fourth of the day. Our next item, Mayor, is we are, continue to move and make progress on the Town Creek Culvert, the largest capital project that the city has ever undertaken, and, but we are getting to some very critical parts of that project, and we just wanted to take a moment to remind you all what it looked like and what those critical milestones would be. So I'll turn it over to Kevin Mulligan, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, and good evening. As City Manager was saying, I want to present an update on the Town Creek Culvert, the construction process or in progress that we are, status of that. So real quick, so started the project back almost a year ago, and the plan is to, schedules for it to be summer/fall of 2020. So we've completed, in Town Common, we've completed First Street, we've completed Third Street. Fourth Street will be probably about two weeks away. Street, Fourth Street will be probably about two weeks away, end of February, maybe, the last week of February is scheduled for Fourth Street to reopen, at which time Fifth Street will close. So, that is a significant milestone, where you start to get into the more high-trafficed, high-volume streets, both pedestrian and vehicles. So, so the end of February, Fourth Street will open and Fifth Street will, will close. And then about a month later, we're looking at Reed closing, and that's a section, essentially, I'll show that a little bit later. It's a small section of Reed, and we'll get into that in a little more detail. So, Fifth Street will reopen back in, in the summertime, June, July, and as well as Eighth Street and Washington, and I'll show some pictures of that. We're working in two different areas right now, working at Fourth Street as well as between the courthouse, the UNX building, and between Tasty Thai and Marathon. So, in that area, the culvert is, is progressing. Contractors also working on Washington between Eighth and Ninth, so awful lot of work there. All right, so, some progress photos, this is a picture of the wetland, to the left was what we described, to the right, it'll be, you see, it's not planted yet, it'll be planted this spring or early summer. All right, just a, wanted to honor Aaron Heinz, some beautiful pictures he's taken as a city photographer of this. In the background there, in front of St. Paul's, just north of Third Street is sheeting, and you see some bracing, and that going across is a supported pipe or supported utility, could be a fiber line, quite a bit of utility work. Very complicated project, somewhat the easy part of this is when the ground is out of the way, and then you can put the culvert in, it's getting to that point of relocating, supporting, or installing new utilities, and it's every utility that you can think of. So, all right, there, we see in front of St. Paul's, this is Third Street, the sheeting going in and the bracing, and then the, the box culvert will be dropped between the yellow bracing. All right. There we see a picture of a finished culvert that's under Third Street, and then the, the original culvert with this top and sides have been removed, so as it rains, water will go through that, the existing culvert, and then be diverted over to the, to the new culvert. All right, there's a picture of the opposite side of what we were just looking at, we were looking at the southern side of Third Street, this is the northern side of Third Street, and to the right, those large rocks, there were, we have two RSCs or regenerative stormwater conveyances, and that is the smaller one coming from the ECU parking lot. All right. That is the completed Third Street, right there, so again, you can, to the right is the, is the northern section of Third Street, and you see that RSC there, and then to the left, you see the, the culvert as it was, as it was, it's finished under Third Street, and then they're continuing their work. All right. This is the beginning of Fourth Street. So, St. Paul's is in the background there, and been a great neighbor, a lot of interruption in this project, but a great result, just tremendous amount of work, a lot of, a lot of large equipment for this city. All right, so you see the bracing, and again, the, this is how the culvert, the box culvert is lowered in pieces, the bottom piece, a top piece, those are 10 by 8 culverts.
What's the economic life of?
100 years.
100 years?
Yeah. But I think it's stamped on the side, the old castle is, is quarantined for 100 years, so. All right, here's a picture of where we were last Thursday or Friday, that is under Fourth Street, and you can see the old culvert there is, that's discharging, and over the weekend, they built the connection between the old culvert and the new, as they, you know, this happens at each section, each day, they're putting in no, new culvert and then taking away some of the old culvert. And you can see, just going back to that, it's, it's an order of magnitude larger, you know, the, the new culvert is just much, much larger than the old culvert.
What are the measurements of the old versus the new?
So, the new is 10 by 8, the old varies quite a bit. In this particular section, that may be, do you know what that might be, 5 by?
Is this behind?
This is, this is right at Fourth Street. This is north of Fourth Street. So, I can tell you that there's rebar in this, in this old culvert, and that's not typical, but it's, it's actually square rebar. Rebar is usually circular, speaks to how old this culvert is, but what, if you had to guess, 6 by?
I was going to say.
It's actually not 6 feet, I was standing there, so it's about, I think, yeah.
About 4 feet.
It's, you can't walk in it where you can walk in this, so it's, it's probably.
There's an interesting question, you can walk in it, at some point, when this is all done, is it, does you, is there some sort of provision to keep people from walking in it?
In this culvert?
There'd be rainfall.
Yeah.
Is there a provision just?
In the design, that means, you know, it's going to be open, right?
Commons.
Commons.
You know. It's our serine, get in the culvert, within or two.
It's just, I don't want to say Darwin.
I'm not saying it needed, I'm just saying I'm curious, you know, will the end of it just be wide open for people to?
As much as the existing culvert was. So.
Can you park for Gary tubing underground?
Underground tubing out.
You get a Tesla?
We'll send a few GoPros through here, just so you can see the effect of water going through. So, anyway, like I said, there's two different locations that they're working in, and you can see, one of the, when we're talking about the need for the project, this is August, there's, upper right is an August 2017 photo, and I think that was repeated in September of 18. We get these real flashy intense storms, a couple inches within an hour, that is the parking lot of the courthouse as well as the intersection of Eighth and Washington, so quite a bit of water in that street, and this is a construction in that area which will mitigate those issues. So, courthouse, I've been meeting with them very often, they've been a great partner on this, as well as the restaurants and UNX, it certainly has been interruption to the, to their operations, so they've also been a great partner. And here's a picture of the culvert, this culvert is small, this is 10 by 6, I think, 10 by 6, and this is right at the courthouse. All right, I would say that this picture was from a month ago, this, you can see the beginning section of the culvert just north of the blue, just to the left of the blue tanks, and it's now in front of UNX.
It's going around UNX this time, right?
Yes, that's, it's going up Washington.
But the original one actually goes right under you.
Right underneath it.
So, what will they be doing with that section?
That becomes a private section, so all of their stormwater piping is piped to that culvert, so it becomes theirs.
Very legally binding way.
We met with them, do you want us to fill this in, put, put grout in it? It would have required them to sort of redo their stormwater collection system, so that is what we're doing. All right, so, that's where we are. All right, so circling back to Reed Circle, this is where the project starts to get quite a bit more real. Again, Fifth Street closure at the end of the month, and you've seen this slide, here's the area I'm talking about. So, this is in front of the university, in front of the university sign, that, that grassy area there, that will be closed beginning March 1st, the end of the last week of February, and you see Reed Circle will be, remain open for the month of March. All right, those red lines there, that is the vehicle detours and the green, or the pedestrian detours. So, here's some of the signage that, what's a public meetings, is what's in the design plans, is what we've met with ECU and the Uptown business is about. Again, the, the traffic will be signed to go to First Street and down to Elm because those are the two largest streets. Fourth Street will be open, Third Street will be open, Summit and Jarvis, these streets will be open, we're just signing cars that if they need to get around, the quickest way is going to be first to Elm, and vice versa. All right, pedestrian traffic will be routing them and signing them towards First, Fourth.
How do you bring in the force, I guess, people that are living on Fifth Street and need access to Fifth Street?
So, they can get access, it's really, it's really just closed right here, so Fifth Street, they can get to Holly, they can get to Summit, we are just signing it that local traffic only, you know, use the detour on Elm or another roadway, but there'll be nobody who's blocked off from getting to the apartment, their apartment, their residence. All right, so the red section is what happens come April. So, the yellow section will still be closed, but in order to, for continuity of some sanitary sewer mains, we need to work in the red area as well as the yellow area, and so come April, both of those sections will be closed. And we'll point out that the Hodges Alley, the Hodges Parking Lot, you will be able to get into that, coming down Fifth Street, you'll be able to make a right onto Reed Circle, so that will be a two-way traffic just for Hodges. So, there are residents that live and park in Hodges Alley, there are some access points there, you will be able to get to the Hodges Parking, Parking Lot. All right, so that will then take, take over in April, and again, that will be closed. Here are the detours again for the vehicle detours, if you're coming down Cotanch, you'll need to get over to Evans, and then up Reed to First Street and Elm. And again, the roads in between, the smaller roads are open, but we're, we're signing them for First and Elm. The pedestrian detours get, stay the same for Fourth, but also, I'm sorry about this, Kelvin, I'm getting out of your picture, but this will be blocked off, signage at ECU, this will be open down by, just south of Chico's. All right, so working with ECU, they're signing their campus to indicate that this walkway is closed. All right. Phase three, so now Fifth Street is back open, this is June, July of 19, and the area that was previously closed of Reed, that is now open, and we move on to the next section south of where we were, working our way towards Cotanch, and this is going to start June or July of 19, and that will extend on for a part of four, four months?
So about October.
So about October. All right, so, the vehicle detours, again, around that area, probably less of an impact than the previous, but you'd be able to come down Cotanch, make a right, or make a left, up Evans, and then over to Fifth. Pedestrian detours, you'll be able to use Fifth, be able to use Cotanch.
Did you have any feedback on any of these meetings that you had set up from the business owners as far as them being upset?
Mostly just appreciative of the information, I understand it has to happen, been working with them, meeting with them for the last three and a half years. We move on to the, so, this is one of the things, to answer that question, you know, we've identified areas where you won't be able to park, but also because you can't park there, we've moved the loading zone to assist with, you know, be able to load out of the Hodges Lot as well as on Cotanch, these are areas that we're creating because we're taking some of the other ones away.
Yeah, as far as when it parks, basically, is that coming along that stretch there?
Oh, I don't have that number, but it's 25 roughly.
I will add that this, this outage is for phase three, so not all of this will be closed from 1 through 3.
Sure.
So, you've got pieces that are closed during 1, but once you hit 3, all of that is closed.
Okay. So, and, I'm sorry, I know it was in one of the previous slides, how long was phase three again? Like, 20 months, was it, was it 2 months?
Phase three was essentially June, July to October.
Okay.
Does ECU's concerned, I'm sure, but they have major loading operations in and out of their dining hall right there, right?
Yes, so, let me jump back to, to that. So, when this phase, and let me actually go back to phase two, depending on the size of the truck, they will either come up Cotan, come up Reed and be able to get into that driveway, and then turn around and leave. If it's a large truck, we'll work with them and establish a temporary driveway through the yellow working area so that they can back into, we'll remove the retaining wall that's there, the north retaining wall, and so that they'll be able to get the deliveries. All right, so, that, that's been quite a detailed work item to work that out so that they're feeding 2 to 3,000 students a day, so it was imperative that we factor something in so those deliveries that happen every day can occur.
And then in phase three, when the whole road's closed, but it's the summer, in theory?
It's the summer, so that, that will work out well, but there'll be a, a temporary driveway.
Up in that upper area, okay.
So, there, this, there's a wall here, that will be moved.
Okay.
So, we'll be able to pull in there, so it'll be flagged in.
Kelvin, do you want to let them know how deep the hole is going to be during the work area?
Yeah, so, in, in this area, where, this is the deepest part of the project, certainly that grassed area there, close to 30 feet in the ground. So, it's, it's a big hole. It is a big hole.
So, and when we're doing this, I guess, maybe from a standpoint of, where is the existing?
So, the.
Where's the existing infrastructure on there? Because I guess my, my big thing is, too, we, you know, we've seen the video, we've seen the pictures of some of those monstrous storms that dumped a tremendous amount of rain in there, with a 30-foot hole right there, how's that going to funnel that water, especially in that circle right there where we saw?
Right.
Localized flooding on a regular basis?
So, anyway, that goes away until when the project's done.
Right.
So, we need all those connection points, we can't have a bottleneck of the existing culvert, but the existing culvert is, it goes through here, and it's in the work area, so we'll be replacing that. And it comes up through here as well, so it's, it's in Reed, and we're replacing it, not in, not over the top of it, but right next to it. It's, it's in the northern part of Reed, and we're kind of on the southern part of Reed with the new one, and then we'll have connections to it.
So, there'll be, there'll be sufficient amount of water flowing through there, especially when we open up the 10th Street Connector Project, and?
That, that project.
My concern is if we cut it off at that point, and all pools right down there by the, the boundary, we're going to have more flooding, and I'm sure you have already thought about this, I'm no engineer, so.
During, during construction, post-construction, we are good, all right? During construction, if we get a significant rain event, you've seen what happens at, at the courthouse, and, and also in this bowl area, historically, it has been flooded. Until we can get a larger culvert in there, we will still have some challenges in that area.
Will they be?
They will have bypass pumping to pump to the new, the new culvert, so, there'll be a lot of things in place, but unfortunately, what's still, what isn't there yet is the new culvert.
Have we talked to the Boundary or some of the other businesses that are around there just to give them forewarning that that potentially could be a huge issue for them?
Yeah.
If we have localized flooding?
That is the issue today, that, you know, the construction is not what's creating that, that's the issue of the existing culvert.
Sure.
So, we, we have met with all of the businesses in that area, we've met with the Boundary a number of times on this issue.
While on the construction, it's not going to further exacerbate the issue.
That's right.
Right, I, I think that's the question the council's asking.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Is the construction going to further exacerbate it, or is it, is it as bad as it's going to be right now?
It's, it's right where it is right now.
So, it's not going to be any worse?
No, I mean, we'll have, we have pumps out there, and we have a larger culvert to pump it to, so, in, in some effect, it will be a better condition. But it still has to, it's still trying to get through that culvert that's undersized.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Good question here, in terms of traffic and the lights, are you guys going to change the timing of the lights there? Because generally now, we, you still have traffic movement, even if it's a red light, people are able to turn right on the red and make their way to Reed, but now everybody's going to have to turn left?
Yes, yeah, the signal timing, all of that will be addressed.
I hope so, because they didn't do that for the Evans Street project, when, when it was closed there, you would sit there at Evans Street and 10th Street, and that thing would be the longest light, and there'd only be a few cars that were taking that left-hand turn on at Evans Street, and it would just, you would sit there forever, and so the traffic going into the Uptown District was.
Kelvin, will foot traffic be affected, go on and back up Fifth Street into the neighborhood?
It, it will during phases 1 and 2.
Okay.
So, it will be closed across Fifth Street, and, but I wanted to show, so, the top-left picture is that 6-foot chain link fence will surround the cut from Fourth Street to Reed, it'll be 360 degrees around the, the open cut, so Fifth Street will be blocked off, pedestrians won't be able to get through it. So, all right, so, and actually, we're meeting with. So, and actually, we're meeting with contractor and police department just to kind of go over that as we get into this next phase, and that is a major pedestrian back and forth. Just to see what addition, here's what we have designed. We have the six-foot chain link fence. We have some construction fencing in front of that. We have a sign, we have it lit. Let's walk it with PD, let's walk it with the contractor and see what else maybe we need to do. Utility impacts, again, we're moving every utility, water, sewer, gas, electric, fiber. No utility outages are scheduled, no decrease in water pressure anticipated. Fiber, the entire fiber network that supports the university goes across Fifth Street. So we'll be supporting that. Business promotion, Brock has been working on this. So City will make efforts to promote the Uptown District. There'll be signage along the detour routes, along Fifth, along Cotanch. And certainly, we've been working on a social media aspect and meeting with the businesses. I'll be meeting with Chico's and the museum. We met with the museum, met with a couple of the individual businesses. We'll be meeting with Chico's later this week. We had the one-on-one, we had a public meeting on January thirty-first, one-on-one meetings after that. And we'll have monthly meetings either at the library or the museum. The museum has asked us to host that, and that may be a good place to host them. So they're having a special, their display will be on Uptown Greenville, so it goes well. Alright, for the next few months. That is, any questions on that?
Anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. We would ask that if you do have constituents that have questions, that if you'll direct them to Public Works. We are, we have sent employees out to make sure that we meet with all the businesses, but we want to make sure we get as much information out as possible.
That's good.
Okay.
Move on to the next item.
Okay, last item for this evening is a prior, is a follow-up to some prior presentations. Back in October, we provided the council with an overview about the stormwater program, including a history and review of the service levels. Back in November, we provided the council with a presentation on the recommendations of the Stormwater Advisory Committee, including the utility rate study. And now we want to provide you all with a follow-up to, as we've taken that information and synthesized it, to give you all some recommendations related to levels of service, capital projects, and rates. And I'll turn it over to Lisa Kirby. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. So as Ann suggested, we came to you in November of eighteen to present the Stormwater Advisory Commission's recommendation. Our consultant presented that that time. Some of the things that that recommendation included, just to refresh your memory, was they made recommendations on the extent and the level of service. Things like, they felt like the city should maintain any conveyance that conveyed public water, whether it be city water or state water, from city right-of-way, city property, or state right-of-way. Level of service, oh, and they also discussed whether or not city and ETJ, if we should provide services in the ETJ. What they recommended was that the city should provide services to the extent that the city receives a direct benefit from those services. As far as level of service goes, they had recommended a level of service B for both program management and for operations. And I'll get into a little more about level B when we talk about the options, as well as a capital spending plan that would be associated to maximize whatever approved fee increase, if there is one that council approves. So, along with that, there came some policy or rate structure recommendations that they had. One was an administrative charge that should be charged to every account at a dollar twenty. That dollar twenty accounts for things that can't be directly related to impervious area. So it's things like our indirect charges from the Public Information Office for finance, City Attorney's Office, our billings to GUC, what we pay to bill, as well as some of the public education pieces that we do. The minimum ERU would be charged to all accounts. We would look into with GUC on how we could charge for stormwater-only accounts, which we do not do currently, and then establish a fund reserve for the recommendations. So today, I'm back to talk about some options. And so what we have for you today are what we're referring to as the zero, one, two, and three-dollar plans, to simplify it a little bit. So the zero-dollar plan, obviously, no fee increase. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means to our services. Then a modified stormwater advisory recommendation, which would be a dollar per ERU per year for five years. The SWAC recommendation, we'll briefly go over that again, which is two dollars per ERU per year for five years. And then the exceptional services plan, three dollars per ERU for five years.
Is there any way that you can kind of, I think you have some other slides. Is there any way that you can kind of calculate, like, the average household, like, the increase?
Yes.
Is that a later point?
It is, it is. I'll give you some typical fees for some typical properties or some certain types of property. So at our current rate, it's billed, our utility is billed by GUC, which we've discussed before, and we have approximately forty thousand accounts that account for a hundred and three ERUs. At a rate of five thirty-five, that brings in about six point one million dollars for this fiscal year. And that's with a ninety-two percent collection rate. So the services that you get for that, for that utility fee are, we administer our permit requirements, which is our MPDS Phase Two requirements, as well as our nutrient-sensitive water requirements, our floodplain management program, and our sedimentation and erosion control program. Those three bullets are highlighted in blue because they're federal requirements. We don't have the option on those, on those three programs. The other things that we do is we manage a capital improvement program. We update that and develop it annually. We handle design in-house on smaller projects that are constructed either by our street division or our on-call construction contract. We also manage contracts, design and construction contracts, like Town Creek Culvert, for example. We set up new utility bill accounts, so as a property receives their certificate of occupancy, we establish what their fee is going to be. In addition, we currently inspect about ten percent of the new infrastructure that we bring into the city for maintenance. That involves cameraing lines and visual inspection. Our street department maintains or cleans and inspects all public-owned or open channels every two years. All catch basins are clean and inspected every five years, and pipes are clean and inspected as needed. Some of the things that I want to point out about our current situation is, one, there's no utility bill audits established. We established the fee right now, and that's what continues to be billed. There is no condition assessment and no asset management. And we'll talk a little bit more about what those mean. So this, I think, gets into what your typical property fees are currently, and then we'll talk a little bit about what each plan does to them. But the typical property fees for a big-box store like a Walmart or Target, looking at eight hundred and sixty-six dollars a month. Fast food restaurant, about a hundred and seven dollars a month. Residential property, tier two, is what we identify here, which, when we did our study, about sixty percent of our residential property is tier two. They pay ten dollars and seventy cents a month. And then a multi-story apartment complex pays one seventy-five about, approximately. And these are just examples. So if you look at, if I start to jump into the plans and what that does to our services, if you look at the current fee or the zero-dollar plan, which is no fee increase, our current annual cap available for capital is two point eight million dollars. In FY twenty-one, debt service on Town Creek Culvert will start. That's approximately one point eight million. That leaves us with approximately a million dollars as for our emergency repairs. To put that into perspective for you, this year, our on-call contract was two million. We just put another one on the street, we anticipate that one being two million. And there's plenty of more projects right behind it, ready to do. So what that means, if there's no fee increase, is that as inflation increases, our emergency money will decrease, so that million will drop. There'll be no additional inspections, so we'll still only be inspecting ten percent of the new infrastructure that's brought into the city. No capital spending plan, because there won't be money for capital, and no reserve. We'll lose our stream bank stabilization program, which is the program that helps our citizens with erosion on their yards. There'll be no condition assessment or asset management, and no utility bill audits. So I want to, I want to highlight these rate structure recommendations that SWAC provided for us. Again, one was the minimum ERU, one ERU per account per month, and that generates, it's anticipated that will generate about three hundred thousand a year. The fixed administration, fixed administrative charge of a dollar twenty per account per month is anticipated to generate about five hundred and twenty thousand a year. It was also recommended that whatever fee increase is approved, if so, it would be, it would be spread over a five-year period, so not all at once in the first year. And they also recommended a reserve fund of one point five million dollars. The reason I wanted to highlight these again is as I move into plans one, two, and three, all of these four bullets are applied consistently through those plans. So when I talk about money generated or what services are provided, it takes into account in each of these plans that there's a reserve of one point five. There's a floor in the fund of one point five that these fees are realized over a five-year period. So let's talk a little bit about the one-dollar plan, which was the modified stormwater advisory recommendation. These, what I've highlighted here, are the cumulative services that you would see. So this adds what we're doing now to what we would get with the new, with the new fee increase. So you would go from a ten, from ten percent of inspection of new infrastructure to fifty percent inspection. Open channels would be clean and inspected every year as opposed to every two years. All pipes clean and inspected every year as opposed to as needed. Catch basins clean and inspected every two and a half years as opposed to every five years. So basically, your services are doubling there when it comes to the maintenance side of things. You'll have a million in emergency repairs each year, and a total of nine point nine million in capital dollars over the five-year period. So that's realized, you know, it might be two million the first year, three the next. You would also get your condition assessment. We would be able to assess all pipes, all existing pipes, over a twenty-year period. And asset management. Let me talk a little bit more about condition assessment and asset management, the difference between them.
What is an open channel?
Like a ditch or stream, some, a conveyance that's not piped.
So like, right out, right at the bottom of College Hill, there's the, there's the Green Mill Run that runs right there?
Yes.
There's piping, but then there's also, you know, just the natural stream with that.
So that, that natural stream is the open channel that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question. Sorry if I missed this.
You're fine.
What is, you're talking about adding a million dollars to the emergency fund. Say, the past five years, what have we spent average per year in emergency repair?
So we just started an on-call contract to be able to handle these emergency repairs. This past, the contract we currently have that's coming to an end was two point two million, I think. The one that we just advertised last week for, we anticipate being over two million. So.
We basically have one year?
Half year.
Half year.
Just a half year, okay. Thank you.
So condition assessment, there's a distinction between condition assessment versus asset management, and why these two things are so important to the city of Greenville. Condition assessment really is a systematic approach to cameraing your pipes. On top of that, when they camera them, they apply coating, and it's a universal coating system. And what that does is it tells, somebody that just looks at the coating can see, okay, this is a priority because it has horizontal cracks or it has joints that are separated. And so there, there are codes that go along with each of those conditions, and it kind of gives you this unbiased look at what the condition of the pipe is. It doesn't speak to how important the pipe is, the criticality of the pipe. That's what asset management does. So asset management takes that condition assessment, and it references or cross-references against, is there localized flooding in the area? Is there a capacity issue? Are there street condition issues? Is there alligator cracking, potholes? What do the maintenance records look like? Have we invested a ton of money in this pipe already? Or are there water table issues, soil conditions, bedding concerns? And then they take all of that information and they create a prioritized list of projects for us. In addition, asset management develops and manages those contracts and recommends whether it's just remove and replace, or whether we can repair in place, like slip lining, for example, or spin cast. So, an example, to give you an example of this, you might have a pipe under a road. You do the condition assessment piece, and it's got four joints that are separated. So in that case, your condition assessment is going to be very poor because you have four separated joints. When you look at it from an asset management perspective, though, the road hasn't failed. We haven't had to do any repairs on the system, so it's a very low priority. On the other hand, you might have, you know, a pipe under the road that has one joint that's failing or separated. Very, very good condition as far as just one joint having an issue. Yet there are sinkholes. The road has failed. We've sunk a ton of money into repair. Maybe it's the entrance to the emergency room at the hospital. That would be the criticality issue. So now it becomes a high priority. So you can't just base your decisions or your priorities on one or the other. It has to be a combination of both. So when we look at the one-dollar plan, to get back to what a typical, what this would do to a typical property, we've got the big-box store, fast food, residential tier two, and multi-story apartment complex again. First column identifies what we just saw on the previous slide, which is what they're currently paying on average. FY twenty would be what they would pay in that first year of the fee increase. And that includes their one-twenty admin charge. The last column is year five. So that's what they would be paying after five years for the one-dollar plan.
Is that a part of the multi-story, like, the dollar seventy-six, is that per unit in the building?
It is, it is. And that's why it's lower than the residential property.
Why the significant increase for the apartment one?
For the apartment one? Because they... Correct. The minimum ERU is what increases theirs drastically.
So the minimum ERU is going to be five point three five?
So with the minimum ERU, they would pay, under our current policy or rate, they would pay five dollars and thirty-five cents, which is already more, you know, it's already quadrupling what they're currently paying. And then when you tack on the fee increase on top of that, they go up to eleven twenty by the end of five years.
So in this scenario here, is this a hypothetical, or are we saying this is a hundred, a hundred-unit complex? Or is it just per unit?
This is per unit, but this was just one that we picked. An apartment complex that we picked that had multi-stories, because that's who it really affects. Because right now, what we do is we take that rooftop or that impervious area, and it's divided between all the tenants. So when you have multiple stories, you have the same footprint, but you have multiple people sharing the costs. So. So to look at the two-dollar plan, this was what SWAC recommended in November. And I just kind of summarized it a little bit so you could compare the two. Really, this gets you, the only change in the two-dollar plan from what you had for the one-dollar plan is your emergency repairs and your capital projects. Everything else stays the same. Your maintenance efforts or services, condition assessment, asset management. Instead of one million in emergency repairs, you have one point five. And instead of nine point nine million in capital over five years, you have eighteen point five. And here's your typical property fees associated with that. Again, the first year, or the first column identifies what they're currently paying. Second column is what they pay the first year. And the last column is what they would pay after five years, if we did the two-dollar plan.
I'm sorry, what was the typical? Residential house, it's your...
It's tier two, so that's, right now, they're paying ten seventy.
But as far as, like, what's the approximate size of the...
Oh, I got you. Two thousand square feet to four thousand.
So let's just say...
Impervious, not square foot of their home.
Okay.
Including driveway.
Mm-hmm. So the tiers are 200 square feet to 2,000, 2,000 to 4, 4 to 6, and 6 to 8, and then we'd max out.
What's the, what's the, what would be the estimate for the largest one?
The largest it can be is tier four. So it'll be four times whatever the ERU rate is. So four times five, 35, 21 something. 2140, from the back of the room.
What about, what about for fiscal year '24?
Be 14 times 4 plus 1.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So 56, 57, 20?
I couldn't tell you what tier.
[laughing].
I don't know, but that's a lot of money.
Could you go to the recommendation slide again, please?
The services?
Yeah. So, so that list right there, you know, would that make us, I guess, in the region and then in the state, would that make us a leader or a laggard if we got to, got to that point?
Um, I feel like for the region, this would make us a leader. Now, it, it would make us a leader from what they currently expend, not what they need to spend. The unique situation Greenville is in is we have the master plan, so we know what we need to spend. And they're kind of moving through blindly at this point, the other municipalities, because they don't know what they have out there. So it's a benefit in the fact that we know where we need to go and it means now we got to figure out how to get there, so.
Is there anything in the analysis about whether or not there's an anticipated chilling effect because of having people moving to Greenville, opening a business in Greenville? Things like that?
No.
No need to impact what this does for future business, future growth, future economic development?
Oh, God. Big box stores, I mean, anything like Dick's to Kohl's, to any of those standalone department store size, I couldn't tell you.
I mean, is that, is that kind of a standard rate for a big box retailer?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just asking, is that kind of a standard rate for the big box retailers? Like, I mean, in other municipalities, are they paying that, that type of?
They're paying, yeah, and I didn't go back because we, in November, I think the consultant provided kind of what the rates were. And I, we certainly were not the leader and we're not the lowest payer, but it would be, their charges are similar monthly. So. So exceptional services option, that gets you 100%. There are some changes in, in this one. It gets you 100% of your infrastructure being inspected before we take it over for maintenance. Your open channels are clean and inspected every nine years. I mean, I'm sorry, nine months, thank you. And all pipes are clean and inspected every seven years. Catch basins every year. You still have the 1.5 in emergency repairs, 29.1 in capital over five years. What this one gets you is the 18.5 in infrastructure replacement, which we, we're not a part of the other plan. So this is that piece that we've been kind of talking about when it comes to condition assessment and asset management. This is the life cycle of our system that's out there now. So as pipe starts to fail, we need to start to replace it. As we talked about with Town Creek Culvert, right now, manufacturer recommends 100-year life cycle. When these pipes were put in, it was 50 years at best, depending on what material they used. So it gets your condition assessment in 10 years as opposed to 20 and your asset management. And I'm scared to show you the rates.
So as far as the $2 plan and the $3 plan, I guess you're anticipating that for the emergency repair, it's going to be 1.5 million dollars. Are you, are you anticipating that since we're going to be having more capital projects that you're going to have less emergency repairs?
That would be, that would be the goal.
Or are we going to still be lagging behind? Because like, we, we talk about that all the time. We have the bond, we have the bond, I'm sorry, the, the street, what was it called?
We're starting the street.
Yeah, and, and we had that group that put it together and they, they came up with 2.5 million dollars, but you know, we were still funding at 2.2. So to me, are we going to be, you know, just lagging behind year after year after year? How was it determined that you were going to do 1.5 million dollars based off the increase? That's my question.
Right, right. And I think when we start, there's always going to be more than 1.5 million that needs to be done out there in those emergency quick repairs that we have to do. Where you really pick up speed on gaining, you know, gain a ground on it is, one, when you start doing 100% inspection. Because that's part of the thing is, was it installed right? Was it bedded right? When it's turned over to the city for maintenance. And right now, we have pipe that is, that's failing, that's five years old. So, so we start to gain ground on that side as well as your capital projects. You're investing your money into capital projects that handle localized flooding. There might be some condition issues there as well. So you kind of, you get some of the bang for the buck on your emergency repairs with your capital projects. But the truth of the matter is, we, in the past, we have not invested in our system, the existing system that we have. So you've got to make up that ground before you can get even again.
Can you go back as well? So you just mentioned something about doing 100% inspection of the infrastructure or replacing pipes that we just took over five years ago. So that would seem like a pretty high priority, right?
It is.
You know, something such as open channels, how many miles of open channels do we have in the city?
77?
That's maybe 95.
95.
So 95, 95 miles of open channels. Currently, we're doing it every 24 months, right? And things aren't great when it comes down to stormwater, so it needs to be increased, right? So can we identify that as something that's a priority too? Or could it be, you know, every 13 months or 14 months, right?
Right.
Because there's a cost, an expense for...
Correct.
You know, if we, nine months, here's the expense, 10 months, here's, you know, or 10 months, here's the expense, so, so are we able to prioritize and say, you know, with this plan, we want to focus more efforts here, here, and here? And have you guys done that?
Is that part of this?
That's part of what we looked at here. That's why if you notice between the $1 plan and the $2 plan, you see all the operating pieces are the same. Where you got your, where, where the money went into was the capital projects. Because we felt like the operating side was a little more important for us to gain ground. We don't want to continue to create the same problem that we've had in the past.
And I think in one of the first slides, you mentioned administrative charge on a monthly basis. So explain what that is.
So what, what the Stormwater Advisory Group recommended was this administrative charge, which was $1.20, and that would be applied to every, every account that was out there.
What was that?
Same thing, just to the stormwater utility. It was just a way of dividing up the charges that the city sees that are independent of impervious area. So impervious area on somebody's property directly impacts how much maintenance we have to do. But it doesn't impact the fact that I have to do public education all year. It doesn't impact the fact that I have to manage permits, two permits for the city of Greenville. So those things were put into this administrative charge where the consultant felt like everybody in the city should pay their share of the administrative side of it.
So is that $500,000, something like that, going to be a different line item?
Mm-mm. That's not the way it...
What do you mean in different?
It would be lumped into the, into the revenue generated by the utility.
Are you asking for a separate line on the bill?
No, no, I'm just wondering.
Budget.
I'm just making sure that that $500,000 is going toward projects and not...
Somewhere else?
Yeah.
It'll be part of the enterprise fund.
It'll be part of the enterprise.
But as far as the bill, I don't know if you could say...
We could, i- if that's a priority, so.
Obviously. Just, once again, just wondering where it's at.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. I think we were... So this is just a summary of what the ERUs or what the rates would be for each plan from the zero to the $3 plan, from year one to year five. And you can see, we go from 6 to 10 in the dollar plan, 6 to 14 in the $2 plan, and 8 to 20 in the $3 plan.
But this is base, right?
This is. This, and you can see, it does not include the $1.20 admin charge. This is per ERU. So some properties are 10 ERUs, some properties are 110 ERUs.
And it's important to point out that this is just done for education purposes. We are not to the point where we, we are asking you all to give us some direction, but we are not to the point where we're recommending a certain dollar amount of an increase. So I don't want our, our reporter to suggest that this is the, the proposed rate structure because we are not there.
So summary of typical property fees. So this takes the same thing for each of the plans and it tells, it compares the typical properties and what their rates would be for each, so that you can see them side by side.
I'll be honest with you, I think the concern for the most are the apartments. That is a significant jump. I mean, a significant jump. People are probably most vulnerable in our city that are not used to paying for that or on a fixed income, that potentially are going to jump up from $1.76 to $10. I said, that's a significant jump for them.
Now, we can, and I say this about apartment complexes because we do it with, strip malls is a good example, where you have a big box store and then you have the little dollar store next to it or a hair place or something. The owner of the property, so the management company for the apartment complex can call in, they can opt to pay this fee for all of their tenants. What that does is it get, it drops the administration fee. So like, let's say there's 200 tenants in an apartment complex, the city would be collecting 200 times $1.20. If the property manager pays that fee, it's one account, so it's $1.20.
So, you know, as far as the administrative, are we going to continue to do the same method that bring the utilities, is it continue to bill the, I guess, the user of this fee? So I guess if we're going to go ahead and increase at $1.20, we're just creating a new income stream as opposed to not offsetting it by taking it in-house or making a modification to who's actually doing the collection of it. So this is just another way to, I guess, tax the citizens of Greenville.
That's a way of charging the service we've already been providing them.
The $1.20 does represent a slight increase in the stormwater fee. What the $1.20 is trying to do is to cover the cost of those standard services that we have to provide to every single account regardless of the size. So a big box store will pay $1.20, just like a house will. Because there, because as, as Ms. Kirby at least has indicated, there are certain services that we have to do to every account regardless of the size of the account. Now, that's not to, we don't have to do the $1.20. I think this came across from the consultant's viewpoint that that was a...
This is a, it's a typical charge that they see in other municipalities, is that it's broken down as admin versus...
It's like a backdoor tax. It really does.
Well, I mean, I, it, it is, it is part of the rate and it, and it would, it, it is essentially a rate increase as it relates to stormwater. It is.
We could, if you wanted to, you could get rid of the 1.20 and change the, you know, and change the, the, you know, the ERU and increase that by 50 or 75 cents or a dollar. Whatever the, whatever the, whatever the amount was, which, which gave you the same revenue over the course of the new pricing model. But it's not a tax, we're, you know, it's a fee that's being charged to citizens for a service being rendered for them. It doesn't go into the general fund. It's not being used to pay for ambulance and other general purposes. It's used to pay for the work specifically, you know, the work on the, on stormwater.
And Lisa, do you want to say something about the, the revenue reviews that will be done? Do you have someone to be looking at, make sure we're capturing all the revenue?
For the... Oh, for the, the asset, or the billing technician, right, right. So that is one of the things that is included in this fee, is right now, we don't have someone at the city that is 100% devoted to billing. Like I had mentioned, we don't have audits. Once we initiate the fee, it is what it is. So this includes someone to capture that lost revenue that we're seeing.
So we don't currently do audits?
Correct.
So are we confident in the amount that we're receiving versus what we should be receiving right now?
There is some money that we're leaving on the table. That's why this billing technician position is so important.
Do we know how much?
We don't. Not as a whole, because some of it is, as things get changed out, and I'll give you an example. Parking lots don't have a utility bill associated with them. We don't issue a certificate of occupancy for parking lots. So when a new parking lot is built, unless we see it, we don't, we don't know to charge for it. There is no trigger for it. Bacon apartments, we don't have stormwater-only accounts. I don't know how many are out there because they don't have utility bills. But as we find things, as we go through the software and we find things, there are processes that can be changed, there are policies that can be changed where we would not lose the revenue that should be being billed.
Do you have another question? No, I just want to say, you know, before, before we move forward on increasing more fees, it would make sense that we understand we're getting what we should in terms of revenue coming in from what we're currently charging.
Well, I will tell you, the revenue that we're talking about trying to generate with these recommended fee increases is substantially more than what, what is being left on the table.
If we don't, respectfully, right?
Right.
Okay.
Also, we don't have the revenue, the revenue isn't there to support the, the analysis you're asking for, right? I mean, part of this additional revenue allows you to hire the people to do these analyses. That's what modded is.
I mean, I'd, I'd really like to see us find out and look more into the collections. You know, the city manager and I spoke about this today, as far as how's it being collected? You know, it's, it's being coupled with the freebie utilities bills for everyone, you know? Does the city, do the city's bills get paid first? If somebody comes in, makes a partial payment, does the city bill get covered first or does the electric bill get covered first? You know, we don't have any, you know, the way, the way it's, the way it's set up now, you know, green utilities, if they don't get paid, they cut the power off. If we don't get paid, we continue the service. So, you know, I think that's something that, I mean, we can't, we can't stop.
The fact of the matter, you can't cut off stormwater.
You can't cut off stormwater.
It's a utility that we're going to provide regardless if they pay a dollar or a, or their full bill.
That's right.
We cannot.
I think that's something important that we should look into prior to engaging and increasing something, you know, especially on citizens that are going to be in the lowest tier and go from, was it $1.70 up to $7 and something immediately? I mean, that's, that's a significant jump for the first year and then it continues to increase year after year.
But it, but it, but it is important to point out that the dollars that are needed to support the continued healthy operation of the utility are going to be more than, we, we believe there is money on the table, but we don't believe that there's a significant amount of money on the table related to it. Point well taken, Mayor. You and I discussed it earlier about the need to really understand how it is that billing takes place, how well are, are we doing that, collecting what's out there, what are all the tools? But you can look at the level of service that we have and what is needed in order to maintain a healthy utility system. And what's left on the table is not going to make up for that.
Sure, and I understand that completely, you know, but you look at that and going from the, what was it, SWAC, is that the name?
SWAC.
Their analysis, I mean, you go from the $0 plan, what we're doing currently, they're paying $1.76, and then all of a sudden you go to theirs, it's $15.20. That's nearly 10 times what they're paying in that first year. That's a huge jump. That's like them raising the utility, raising the water rate, you know, 10 times.
And what, really, the reason we have brought this to you all in, over multiple months is so that A, that we all understand the perspective and the needs of the stormwater utilities, and then B, for you all to begin to funnel it down, for you all to say, A is too much and B is not enough. Or we need more information on what's on the table. Go back, give us an analysis, help us to understand what, what are some other options? You may, to Councilman Litchfield's perspective, we, you may say to us, go back on that laundry list of operational issues and let's say that we do the open dish as you've recommended, but we don't do something else quite as often. That is what we can do at the next month and what we wanted to be able to do, is to bring you back that information.
And another thing that I have an issue with too is as far as the, each of those plans, you know, I'm very concerned about the emergency repair. If, you know, for two years in a row, we're at 2.2 million or $2 million... If, you know, for two years in a row, we're at 2.2 million or $2 million, and all of a sudden we drop down to 1.5, even if we're at the highest rate, you know, that takes a significant amount of money off the, I mean, we're not going to fix our stormwater system. Let's say we raise it up to the $3 range, we're not going to fix our stormwater system in two years. So you're going to compound those emergency repairs that should have been done, you know, for two years in a row, which could potentially be a million dollars of repairs, and we're going to compound those, and then three, four, or five years down the road, we're going to have a huge mess as far as cleaning that up, and then we're going to be looking at increasing the rates even more beyond that.
And I will tell you, that was for the sake of the model. The reality of it is though, is if we have 9.9 in capital money over the next five years, and we only have 1.5 in emergency, and something happens, that's where the capital money is going to go. It's going to go to the emergency repair that has to be done. But that, then that digs into what you can fix for localized flooding or other issues, so.
Councilor Smiley?
I'm wondering if anybody's, I've done much of an analysis, and at some point, you know, if you carry this out over 50 years, right, then one of, some of these models result in a lower aggregate cost to operate this system. Because in theory, at least, if you can spend more money on maintenance and more money on assessment and more money on scheduling capital repairs rather than doing emergency repairs, because capital repairs are cheaper than emergency repairs, and a well-maintained pipe will last longer than a, so that doesn't show, so that additional maintenance doesn't save you any money in the first 10 years, 20 years, or 30 years, but at year 30, 40, 50, it starts saving you money because you're not replacing the pipe. So some of, so, and this may be too complicated, given how the baseline we're starting from, which is, we need all the money we can get immediately, right? But somewhere, there's a way of calculating, look, if we do this amount of money, this amount of work in the next, in the first five or 10 years, then that will save us money in years 30, 40, and 50. There's a total cost of ownership here, which is driven, it's to some extent, by how we allocate this money, how we're able to allocate this money early on. And I'm just curious if anybody's thought in those terms, you know, it's, I know, right, I guess it's stormwater because it's a roof, but wherever, we're putting a new roof on a building over on Elm Street, and it's a metal roof, and that probably has a 40-year, 35, 40-year life, and we're doing it instead of putting an asphalt roof that will have a 15-year life, it's costing us more now, we're only able to do it because we have the money now, but in terms of total cost to the taxpayer, over the life of the city, and the city's going to be here a while, it's, you know, it costs less. And I feel like that should be partially a driver in what we're doing here. It's like, what, you know, it may cost more now, but in the aggregate, in the long term, it costs less. And that's, I think that's a, that's a lot of math, and I'm not going to do it, but...
Councilor Litchfield? I agree with, you know, what Councilmember Smiley just said, that, you know, we have to prioritize and see where our money is being spent, how it's being spent. A couple of just follow-up questions, I guess, is when you go back to any of those plans, right, it shows increases along the way. Can you just go back and one real quick?
Do you want to particularize?
No, if they might. The next slide?
This one?
Okay. So past fiscal year 2024, are we seeing annual inflation increases past that point along the way?
That isn't part of this recommendation. What is part of this recommendation is that, as part of the capital spending plan in year 2024, we would do an update to the master plan, and we would do a rate study at that point and assess where we're at and where we need to be.
Okay. Has there been discussion about, you know, having sort of a bond pay for, you know, some of the immediate, big, big needs, and having these funds pay into Michael?
I was going to say, as part of this, they didn't, it was a pay-go. We did not look at bonds as part of this rate study.
They're going to get an influx of cash upfront, but they're just going to be paying a larger interest charge or, I mean, it could be modeled.
Yeah, but also the costs go down over time too, right? I mean, if we do some asset projects right out of the gate, you know, in theory, those projects could cost more 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now. I don't know if a revenue bond would be something that would be appropriate, use the revenue from these fees to pay the debt service on a bond.
It could be modeled that way.
And while we're talking models, and again, now we're getting a little, you know, whenever you're talking about something that, you know, costs, you know, that has like a 40, 50, 60-year life, you know, there's an equity issue in terms of, you know, which taxpayers are responsible for it, right? You know, in theory, we could, you know, raise advice taxes for one year, fix, replace the whole system this year, and it'd be good, it would go for 50 years. That would be tremendously unfair for the taxpayers today, overly benefiting the taxpayers of 30, 40, 50 years from now. By the same token, we could do nothing for 10 or 15 years, and then make the people 10 or 15 years from now pay for replacing the system, and that would be unfair to them to the benefit of the citizens today. One way of looking at that is, you know, you calculate the total, this is the hard part, you figure out what your depreciation is of a whole system, and you try to keep that at 50%, so you're, you know, everybody's sort of paying along, you know, half the system is going to be fixed in the future, and you're keeping it halfway fixed from the people who created it before. And again, we're talking models here, and it's pretty sophisticated modeling for a system that we already know is, you know, is, you know, I imagine the depreciation on the system is probably 70, 80% right now, maybe, maybe worse, I don't know, don't tell me. But, you know, and we're trying to get back closer to that level where, you know, the citizens on both sides of, citizens in the past and citizens in the present, and the citizens in the future are all carrying their fair share of this, of this asset. So while you're doing models, there you go, that's...
Well, I mean, I think, you know, just listening, they've given a lot of guidance on ways that we can take...
I'll give them one more.
I was going to say too, but I mean, it's also fair to say that we're doing the same thing with our roads right now. Our roads, we kick the can down the road.
That's right.
For years and years and years, and we haven't raised taxes to get our roads fixed. What was it, Michael, when you first came on, was it 2015 roughly? $500,000?
Five hundred thousand dollars a year, and now we're like, oh, close to $20 million that we've done over the last five years.
Well, I mean, per year though.
Oh, five years, yeah.
I mean, per year, we're like, close to $3 million in road construction. So, I mean, I think there's, there's other methods of looking at it. I think we all agree that there needs to be more money put towards stormwater, you know, but let's not tax the heck out of the citizens. You know, I think the ultimate goal is to continue growth in our city and bring more people in that will end up paying into this, but we don't want to scare them away before they even get here by charging them $80 a month in stormwater.
Councilor Smiley?
Well, with respect, there's an argument to be made that the people who are coming in and, you know, adding, and adding more need for stormwater, right? When somebody comes in and builds a new apartment complex, or builds a new store, or builds a new neighborhood, you know, there's an argument to be made that they are the ones who are responsible for the system needing to be larger. So rather than raising the rates on the people who have, you know, they moved in, they paid taxes to build an existing system, that system worked, now new people move in and they, and the system has to get bigger, you know.
But what is done on the front end with the rules and regulations for stormwater, when the builder develops that community, all that's been done, we've made those changes because, I mean, back in five years ago, we were doing a 10-year flood, right? Now we're doing a 25-year flood?
Depending on the system.
The person who though puts a new, he doesn't, you know, the person who puts in a new source of stormwater isn't having to pay for the increase in capacity in the pipes downstream. They have to pay for retention on their own property, I get that, but, but before I get too far in that, I did want to say that it did seem like there is a sense that maybe something should be done to moderate cost increases at the small end of the, of this, of the scale.
That's what...
Right. You said your ERU with you, I think you said, you have to, there you have revenue of $295 per year.
That's what I wanted to point out to the mayor.
Yeah, so if you were to, if you don't do that, you know, then you, then, and you allow those apartment people, dollars, to take advantage of the fact they're living vertically, you know, and they keep their $1.76, or $2.50, or $3, or whatever it turns into, you know, you may be able to find $295,000 somewhere else.
Correct.
By changing the...
Now, this is at our current ERU, so this is at 535.
Francis, what would it look like not to cap the residential, right now you say you get to four, right? Four ERU?
Correct.
So if somebody has, that would be eight, 10,000 square feet of impervious surface on their, so if somebody had 12,000, maybe they need to have a six ERU?
Well, we did, we looked at that as part of the rate study, and the revenue generated was minimal.
Okay.
I'm going to say 15,000 a year.
So it's just not a big...
Yes. That was that, another tier.
Okay.
So they did look at some other options. The reason I pulled this slide back out is because it speaks to the one ERU minimum, which is certainly a burden of the apartment, the multi-story apartment, and that's the amount that it would generate, it's estimated to generate each year at our current rate.
Did we look at creative ways such as charging a one-time fee for every time somebody changes electrical service and that whole package is changed, $25 or whatever it may be, or, you know, can we model, you know, how many changes there were in 2018 and what that would look like in 2019 and beyond? I mean, obviously, that's not predictable every year, but it's...
We can explore a variety of options. What we're just hoping that you all will do is provide us with exactly that, with a little bit of guidance. And that's the whole reason we provided the $0 to $3...
Plans.
Plans, thank you, with the idea that, to show you what we could do or could not do. So what I think what Lisa has on this slide is that, is that, that no fee increase is going to result in a significant drop in services, and that exceptional services are going to be cost prohibitive. And what we'd like to do is come back next month with the consultant and provide more detail on the $1 and the $2 plan for you, so.
Show the billing cycle, how it's being billed?
Meaning the priority of...
As far as, yeah, like when GUC receive, remit, when people remit payments to GUC, you know, is electric, water, sewer, gas being paid, and then all of a sudden, whatever, if somebody makes a partial payment, you know, or let's say utilities are turned off, you know, what's the collection rate of that?
Well, we'll bring you some additional detail about billing and billing cycles, and what are opportunities to, to make sure that we are actually collecting what we're billing.
Right. Mayor President Smiley?
Well, as we stand right now, District 1 and District 2, we get a lot of turnoffs, because I get a lot of calls about utility. So if we're going to go up, and especially seniors, you know, there's a lot of seniors in those two communities, and if it goes up a dollar, it's going to mean, you know, it's going, whether they get food or whether they pay the utility bill, which they have to pay the utility bill, so a lot of people are going hungry and just living on a very small amount of substance to stay alive, because a dollar for someone in my community means a whole lot more for somebody in, you know, in one of the more elite communities. I mean, I have star here farms, but, you know, they don't need me, they'll ever call me, because they can pay the utility bill, they don't ever call me unless somebody's trying to resolve something out there, you know? But, you know, it makes a difference, it makes a big difference.
And we do not recommend anything related to this without, without knowing that it will, there will be impact on people, and anytime you do a rate increase, it will impact the residents in our community. We recognize that.
Let me ask one more thing. How did the airport not pay the stormwater fees? How did that affect you all? Because I'm sure that it hurt a lot.
It's a great segue into your next meeting, because you'll see a budget amendment for the fee that we have to return to the airport, so to the tune of $106, $5,000 annually that we will not be collecting from the airport any longer.
I think this, we may, you know, want to move the sliders a little bit, but I think the Stormwater Advisory Committee's done a really good job of, you know, finding the middle, you know, the middle ground or the happy mean or whatever it is. It's good work, and I appreciate, I think it's really, it's been really helpful.
I've seen firsthand, as all of us have, the negative impacts of, you know, flooding, but, you know, it's even more impactful when you see it in somebody's backyard, you know, a drainage ditch that's sunk in that, you know, we're not going to be able to get to for another four months, three months until the contract comes out. You know, hamileos are across the city, and if that person wanted to sell their house right now, they'd have a challenge, they'd have a challenge in time selling their home through the ditch sinkhole in their backyard.
I would ask the council just to recall that right as we were looking at the hurricane coming up the coast, the number of calls that we all received about, from concern about people who had ditches and pipes and other stormwater facilities in and around their houses, and how concerned they were.
You know, probably the ones who have been affected in the past when we have hurricanes, because by the airport, there's a lot over there that the airport caused, you know, by building, and now they don't pay stormwater runoff money, so, you know, I just got a call today about a sinkhole, you know, on, Hall Drive, is it Hall Drive? I just got, yeah, I just got a call today that there was a sinkhole, and the city was supposed to come back to fix it, but nobody came back to fix it, and, you know, it's raining, and the water's running up in my yard, so...
Hall?
Hall, H-A-W.
H-A-W.
H-A-W, Hall Drive.
It's right next to the airport.
Yeah, right, right at the mouth of the airport.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
May I adjourn?
Motion's made by Councilwoman Smiley, second by Councilmember Bill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned.